All good? Good. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the... Man, it's July already. Half a year gone. But anyway, July meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. With that, would you please call the roll?
Yep. Richard Bodie. Roland Mayhew.
Here.
Mike Delvecchio.
Here.
Marcia Haywood.
Here.
Steve Bogut.
Here.
Courting Secretary is Sheena Duncan.
Okay. If you look before us, we have four voting members and one alternate, Richard. Unless something changes in the process, if you don't mind, you'll be a voting member tonight. So that'll give us our... Huh?
Is there a pay upgrade?
Yes.
There you go. I'm in.
Instead of minus zero, it goes to zero. We just take the minus sign away. You get free parking also. It's had a good benefit.
It's a good perk.
Okay. So with that, we're gonna go ahead. And next on the agenda is gonna be the minutes from the last meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? And if so, are there any additions, subtractions, corrections? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept as is.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
We have a motion, we have a second. Marcy.
I'll second.
Roland. All those in favor? Aye. We have a large agenda tonight, so I would like to remind everybody, this is a formal meeting and your patience with each and every applicant will be most appreciated. All comments are not... are directed and questions are directed to the board, not to each other in the audience. Please refrain from comments if someone of the public is speaking and then if you agree or don't agree, please keep those agreements or disagreements to yourself as each person has a right to be able to vote, I mean to speak, before the board. Okay? I may add also, if you have a cell phone, please put it on silence so it does not disturb everybody or anybody. So, let's go ahead and get started. The first is an extension of 156 Eastman Shore Road. Variance extension request from Section 4, Section 235-16 shoreline protection and sec... Article 6, Section 23535B siding rear setbacks to reduce the rear setback for construction of a screen port in the RR1 district. If the applicant is here, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you. As it appears, the applicant is not here. I seek a motion from the board to move this to the next meeting.
Self said.
Have a motion? Oh, okay, well.
My hearing is not very good.
Okay. Introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you.
I'm requesting that the board grant me a extension on the variance that was acted on and given in March of 2000. That was the last meeting at which this group met in person, I think, for some time because of COVID. And the variance was to add a porch to our cottage. Since then, that two-year period, first of all, because of my age and some health problems, we didn't go out in public a lot, nor did we invite people into the house to do any kind of work. So that stopped things. And later on, before there was a vaccine, I did some inquiring because whereas we had the permit from the state and we were requesting the variance from Laconia, I had not gotten a building permit and didn't plan to until I heard what this board offered. So we had no building permit, but I did talk to contractors. And first of all, much to my surprise, I found that the people I talked to were all very busy. I didn't expect that. I thought the opposite was gonna happen. In other words, it was not possible to get anybody who would commit to doing the work in 2020 and they said possibly after the first of the year. The second problem was that the porch is like a deck with a roof on it and it's uses heavily pressure-treated wood. And I was told that pressure-treated wood was not available, that it simply was not being made, that the manufacturers in the South had shut down their plants because of COVID. And so that put a hold on things. And then, of course, what's happened subsequently is the price of materials in general have gone up substantially. The long and the short of it was that as of this spring, we still did not have a contractor. And I naively assumed that since our state permit had a five-year length of time on it, that there was no big rush. And I discovered, much to my surprise, about the same time it expired here, that it was a two-year limit. And I went back and looked at the form which I filled for that and also the acceptance or the approval, and neither of those documents gave a timeline. So, long story short, I would like to have an extension. We still do not have a contractor. There's been some health problems along the way. But we hope that we can move forward on that and in which case I would appear back before this board with the plans. This is my understanding that even though what we're talking about is basically moving the porch itself, 12-by-14-foot porch, farther forward towards the lake, that that really does constitute the basis for needing to form file for a new variance. So that's about all I can say.
Okay. Are we voting on a variance or are we voting on a extension or yes?
At this point in time, just the extension.
Just the extension. Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? There being none, this is an extension. I don't have to open it up to the public. You may have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? If not, then does anybody have thoughts on the situation?
Question, Dean, is there a reason for a moratorium like that? Is it a two-year or a five-year and what is the reason for or is the reason known?
Variants just have a two-year. You gotta act on it within two years. That's outlined in state law.
Okay, fair enough then. Okay. I didn't know if sometimes there's something in the town that...
His timeline does seem to fit the requirements of why such a delay would happen and everything like that, so... I personally don't see any issues with such an extension and stuff, so... Anybody else have any thoughts?
Seems like fine, easy to go.
Sounds logical to me.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve or disapprove or just a motion to do one or the other?
Marcia's ready.
I just make a motion to extend the variance.
Now, it was done in a timely manner?
Yes.
Okay. So it met all the codes requirement so far?
Yes.
Okay.
Second the motion.
We have a second to the motion. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Okay. It passes. I'm not sure if he left or... What, but...
We'll get in touch.
It's approved. All right. Next is we're into the public hearing, so on these actions forthcoming, the public will be able to give input on each and every application as long as they're courteous and everything to each other and to the board. Okay, so keep that in mind. All right. The next application's 137 White Oaks Road. Variance request from Section 11, Article 11, Section 23528 and attached to Table 1 to permit the use of professional office to operate a professional counseling service in the residential rural corridor. And also, it assumes we have a second application for a special exception. So we have a variance and a special exception. Okay? Special exception request from Section, Article 11, Section 235-26 and Table 1, for the use of an accessory dwelling unit to construct a 640-foot accessory dwelling unit in the residential RR2 district. If the applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might help you.
Sean Dutil, and this is my wife.
Marcy Dutil.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, we are planning to build a structure on our property 40 by 40. It's going to look like a western-style barn, but it will house three counseling offices. I currently have one coun... we currently have one counseling office on our property, which is in our home, divided by a waiting room, private entrance and private bathroom. And our counseling practice has expanded enough to need to hire additional counselors. And so this is an effort to do that. I do have some printouts here for some visuals if that would help.
Would that be the pictured drawings of the wood structure and stuff that I've seen?
I'm not sure that you guys have seen it or not. I'll place it here. Yes.
And different aspects of it. This stuff?
These are the things that we have in our package already.
Yes.
Okay.
So the structure is to be used for offices only, not for someone to use as an apartment or...
Yeah, good question. So the first floor will be three offices and a waiting room. The back, I think 12 feet, will be a garage bay. But the upstairs loft, you'll see a second-floor diagram there, will be an efficiency apartment.
And the purpose of the efficiency apartment along with professional offices and stuff?
It will be to... we also are... I'm also a pastor of a church and we frequently have interns that come for a two-year period. And this will be an opportunity for them to have housing for that period of time, paying minimally for that as housing can be an obstacle to actually coming in and working here. Yes, sir.
The structure that's there now, are you gonna tear that down or are you gonna continue using that one?
The structure that's there now is our home. So we'll simply take the office out of the home. And the house, of course, will remain.
Building a new.
What's that?
It's a new building on the property.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we would be turning this into a mixed-use property between having RR1, then it would have a professional use attached with it, and then a rental property?
So the rental property would be considered an ADU, which would be allowed in that zone. But they do need the special exception for the ADU. The office is the reason for the variance. An office space would not normally be allowed in that zone. The... this is a very large lot. They have a lot of room on it. And they're... they have decided to go with a structure that essentially looks like a barn and personally, I think it would fit very well in that area and they will have some minimal parking. I think that's the essential question that you, as the board, need to answer is whether an office space, professional office space, would fit into that location.
Sean, for the three offices in the ground floor, were they just for yours and your wife's use or were you gonna rent one of the offices?
I would eventually hire a couple of counselors. My wife is not a counselor herself. So that would be the intended use of having more than one office. You'll also notice... sorry, go ahead, sir.
Question for Dean. It's allowed to have a residential upstairs from a commercial use like that?
Yes. Yep.
And why do they have to apply for ADU? I thought we cut that process down.
We haven't finished that.
Okay.
We haven't got that through the city council yet.
Okay.
We're still working it.
Now, you said you're a man of the cloth. Are you gonna be asking for exemption for your property taxes?
No, the business is separate from the church. It's a business. It's not a 501(c)(3). So it's separate and completely separate.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit for probably a brief moment and then I'll call you back up, okay?
Thank you.
At this moment, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wished to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board and you may...
Accessory dwelling units, aren't those specifically for family? Or what will it be?
The state re-changed that requirement about five years ago. It does... the only requirement for an ADU now is that the owner of the property has to live in one of the two units. They either gotta be in the main house or they gotta be in the ADU, but there's no requirement of there being any relationships or it is essentially a rental unit on a... in a single-family dwelling.
Right, and rural residential 2 will... doesn't allow this. That's why we need to have the variance.
Yeah, RR1 and RR2 allow an ADU with a special exception. At this point in time, all ADUs require a special exception regardless of where they are. The variance is for the professional office.
New Hope Road, Town Road?
It is not, no.
So his parking for this commercial space will be off of a past five or six road?
It is the responsibility of the abutters of that road to maintain it, although the city has been doing some minimal maintenance. How long that will continue for, I don't know because they're in the process of identifying streets that they're gonna stop doing that too, but I don't know what the timetable is. It could be years. It could be not years, so I don't know.
What? Did you say White Oaks Road is not an exception?
No, White Oaks is. New Hope is not.
Is that something that we need to discuss here about the commercial parking off of a non-Town Road? And I'm happy with the no answer to that, but I'm just posing, I'm just putting it out there. 10 years go by.
It would really be... If there were any restrictions placed on the right-of-way by the other abutters, then there could be, but that would be a civil matter for them to sort out and it would not be a city matter.
Okay, and that answers my question, just, you know, deferring liability for that one right there.
Will people be entering that property off White Oaks Road or off New Hope Road?
I don't know.
Yep.
I thought it was New Hope.
The intention is for... it'll be closest to the New Hope Road, so the easiest entrance will be onto New Hope. You'll notice that our driveway actually intersects White Oaks and New Hope. So that's... that'll be a change because currently, when people come to the practice, they come off of White Oaks.
They come off what?
Off of White Oaks Road, primarily.
Because New Hope, right, New Hope is in that good a condition. I envision more traffic coming in. Be able to stand up to it.
Slightly more. The bosses who own one of our abutters, they do a real good job of maintaining New Hope with their own machinery. So thus far, it hasn't been an issue in eight years we've lived there.
So Dean, they currently are running a professional business out of their home?
Yes.
And that is, did they have to come to the city for permission to do that?
They did not. They qualify under the home occupation part of the ordinance where they're basically employing just themselves and doing a limited practice.
That was my next question as well.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments?
You'll just... you'll notice on in the paperwork that we've been intentional to keep the RR2 farm country look to this edifice that we're building. The property itself is part of the effectiveness of the practice. Whenever I counsel with children, for example, our farm animals, which include sheep, goats and chickens, are very good environment for them. And so the barn look is very intentional toward this. So we hope it'll be attractive to the community and the RR2. Obviously, we do have a lot of property, but farm look, we intend to keep as a part of this.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments?
No, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna... you may sit now. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Dean, it's my understanding that there are two professional businesses very close to where they want to build. A landscaping company and something called LR Stone are on White Oaks Road.
LR Stone is not nearby their property.
Well, I... okay.
Yeah, well, meaning it's a quarter of a mile away.
A quarter of a mile away, okay.
Any thoughts on putting up...
The business is needed, you know, there's a strong need for it and doing it in a residential area is not a bad idea. You don't have to be have an office downtown. And if they're going for the country look, I don't see an issue at all.
I would support. I think it's a beautiful use of the property, for sure.
Okay. So as we move in, we'll have to have two motions. We'll address each application on their own merit. Okay? And... So for the first motion, we need to discuss the variance. So we'd like to entertain a motion for the variance.
I'll go ahead and say that we grant the variance 2022-0038 for Sean and Marcy Dutil because the structure will fit with the neighborhood. The spirit of the ordinance is observed by having a counseling business in that location. It'll do substantial justice because it is needed. And the surrounding areas will be enhanced, not diminished by this. It's a reasonable use for the property.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Motion for the business passes. Okay. The second application is for the special exception. Like to entertain a motion for the special exception for creation of the accessory dwelling unit.
I'll make the motion that we grant a special exception. I'll make the, uh, motion that we grant the special exception, Z02022-0039, special exception for White Oaks Road to have a accessory dwelling unit, because it's good for the area.
Second.
Thank you for all that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion of the motion. All those in favor of the motion. Okay, it passes. Y'all have a very good day. All right. Next item on the agenda is 465 Leighton Ave. North, request for variance from Article Six, Section 235-35A and Attachment Three, Table Two, requesting a setback of thirty-four feet where forty feet are required to accommodate deck built within the front setback of the residential unit.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening, hi. I'm Chris Cahill, Cahill Construction from 465 Leighton Ave. North. I'm looking for a variance of approximately a four-foot encroachment on the front setback of the existing deck structure. Originally, our plan had, um, shown a, a patio with the grade elevated approximately eight foot higher than it is right now. Um, you know, during the construction, we, um, did the best we could to kind of mitigate the site and the challenges of the site, and that's kind of where we had to, you know, drop the grade just to mitigate some water, um, issues along with the site itself. It would be super steep, um, driveway grade and, um, also front slope would be, you know, in excess of forty degrees down to the road. Um, so we ended up putting a deck in place of a patio. The deck encroaches approximately four feet on the, um, closest point. The other corner is, is less, it's probably like two feet, and, um, looking for a variance for that structure. Um, you know, we've done the best we can with some retaining walls there and, you know, put in a lot of drainage and a lot of, a lot of work and went into that site hoping to get a variance for this structure. Um, it is approximately seven feet off the ground, and there are no steps encroaching off the deck in any direction. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions of the applicant?
So, oh, I'm looking at your drawing and, and I'm, just so that we're saying the same thing, I'm looking at this dotted line right here. What is that line? This line, is that your setback?
Um, yep, that's the setback.
Okay, what is over here that makes that setback here? It cuts, it cuts the, at the property angle?
Um, that right there, I'm actually, and the deck is here, so yeah, I'm not sure what that is. That might be the shoreline protection. I've come across the street-
Okay, so-
-from it, so the lake is across the street-
Okay, now that kind of makes sense, I got you, I got you.
That could be what that is. It's definitely not the front setback.
What is the percent grade that's in that, you know, just asking, in that gray shaded area, what's the percent of grade in that, do you know? Steep?
Yeah, very steep, yeah, it's, uh, very steep.
Okay. Do you know the number?
I don't.
Any other questions of the applicant? There being none at this time, you may sit down for a brief moment. And I would like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application.
Has that already happened?
No, that's, well, we're, we're now-
We're on Holman Street now. I thought we were on Leighton.
Yeah, no. Leighton Avenue, I'm sorry.
Let the record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. So basically, it's just, looks like a slight corner of the right side, if I was looking at it from the house-
Yeah, that's the corner that projects about three and a half feet, the other corner is, you know, less than a foot.
Okay.
And that's on a, it's approximately fourteen feet, you know, distance in plane, you know, parallel to the house.
This is a new home, yes?
It is, yeah.
Finished construction?
Yep. Or-
I mean, are you finished? Getting close?
We're working on the, uh, you know, final details in the landscaping part of it right now.
From looking at all the grading on here, you, you've had some challenges.
A lot of challenges.
Looking at the terrain-
Yep.
-from this.
A lot of retaining walls and, um, a lot of, uh, stone, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
With that, you may have a seat. I close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Dean, is there a conflict with, if that is a shoreline and I, and I, and it's not noted on this drawing that I have here, is that a problem for us if we approve a variance of this three-and-a-half-foot extension into the shoreline? Is that an issue for us?
They, they have a permit for, um-
Not for building, they have a permit for-
For part of the problem, they already have a shoreline permit, so I think they're covered.
Right.
The, the front setback, for our setback, is essentially the front of the house, the, 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 the wall of the house that's nearest the road-
Sure.
-is, is, uh, is essentially the setback. Um, you'll note that the actual improved area of Leighton Avenue, um, to the point where you get to the actual property line, there's probably, uh, twenty feet of right-of-way, so even though they're asking for a four feet of relief from their setback, they, they still have a lot of setback before you get to the road.
Sure, understood, okay.
Any other discussion? Thoughts?
Is the deck already in?
Yes.
Uh, was it the building department that picked up on this, or was, or did, how did, how? Okay.
The patio would not require a variance, correct? Just the deck?
That's correct.
Right. Did, would the building department have put a cease and desist order on this property? Waiting for us?
I don't believe we did.
Okay, all right.
I think he's essentially finished with the, with the deck at the moment.
And they said, get the variance, okay, good, all right.
I've been to the property, but not, not in this timeline in a-
Sure, sure, no worries.
Any other discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll do it. Um, I make a motion that we approve the variance on Leighton.
465-
I lost the address somewhere.
465 Leighton Ave.
465 Leighton, uh, variance for the deck. Basically, because it's already there, I did not do a drive-by on this property, but I'm sure it's up to standard and it's not a hindrance to the neighborhood.
I was down there yesterday.
Okay.
It seemed like the biggest part of the hardship would be that the grades, they had the steep grades, which pushed them from one direction to another direction, and for it, and the, uh, in trying to continue moving forward, the builder moved and opted instead of going with a patio to, uh, because the grades would not substantiate a nice patio, brick patio or anything, without a whole lot more with these grades. I mean, you could look at the grades and... So I think that's what drove him into having to use the deck. So the hardship is the actual property itself and the grade of the property itself.
Thank you for your help with that.
No problem. Wasn't trying to horn him on your motion.
Perfect. I'm looking for a second.
We have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
That's you. You're back.
I just came out of work.
It passes, five zero?
No, it, 'cause I just, I'm-
It passes. Okay. Okay. Next, uh, application is, uh, 41 Spruce Street. Uh, variance request from Article Six, Section 235-35A and B, front and side setbacks and Attachment Three, Table Two, to rebuild a ranch-style home as a split-level, increasing bulk on existing non-conforming construction.
Good evening, my name's Steve Converse, I'm representing, uh, Dave Jorgensen. Essentially, the house is burned, and he's looking to rebuild the house. We're staying in the exact same footprint. Alls we're doing is, right now, there's a drainage ditch that goes right behind the house, pretty much at the elevation of the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
So he's got a full foundation underneath the house right now, but he can't keep it dry. He's right close to the sand pit. I have not dug there personally, but I'm sure the water just is uncontrollably going through the ground, and he's ripped up the drainage around the foundation, it just hasn't solved the problem. So my suggestion, the solution is to lift the whole house, only go four feet into ground, and just changing the house from a, um, ranch to a raised ranch, where his basement's now only four feet into the ground. Where he's, actually will be reducing the size of the house by two feet on the one side of the, he was within, he was nine foot six off the property line on the right side of the house. Will be setting it back two feet away from there, so he would actually benefit one setback. He owns the lot, ne, he owns the lot that's next to him, so he has plenty of setback on the other side. So it's the front setback really that's, um, he's thirteen foot seven off the property line, but he's actually twenty-nine foot four from the pavement.
Could you just repeat that one more time for me, what you just said?
So hi, his house is actually, so his wire, why the road is off so much, but his, he really has no frontage in front of his house. His house is actually only thirteen foot seven off the property line, but the pavement is actually twenty-nine foot four away from the house. So if you drive by the house, it appears that he has a lot of frontage, but it's because the property line's setback so far.
Same thing.
When they did the right-of-way to the street, the street probably is not in the center.
What is the front setback requirement for the zone?
Twenty-five feet.
Yes, twenty. And what about the side setback to the property to the-
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
And what is the distance currently from the property line to the corner of the house? On the, on the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, right now, it's nine foot six off the property line. In the front, on the back, it's actually eleven foot six.
I, I, I understand, I, 'cause it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a polygon, it's a polygon shape, yeah, okay.
Steve, since you're doing new foundation, is it too difficult to move it back another few feet?
Uh, the, because of the drainage, there's drainage that's, um, going right tight beside the garage, right behind the garage, and it's possibly wetlands out in the back.
For the record, I would like to say I do live two houses down from this, and it was a tragic night to see what transpired that night. If you, I have videos of this house burning, and it was tragic, and I can say that there is a water, 'cause I have the largest portion of that ditch going through my backyard, uh, so there are constraints and stuff that do inhibit that area as the city itself had to fix drainage which came across the actual end of Spruce Street where it ends into the access road to the city property. They had to fix a culvert and stuff already once that had washed out and stuff, so there is, during the springtime and stuff, uh, a lot of water flow has indicated, uh, that goes through there and past the other culvert on the other side, so neither here nor there, but since I live two, three houses from this house, I thought the record should indicate that I do live there. So- Didn't mean to interrupt. Any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, yes, question, are you, so what's the, the, the depth of the building? I'm looking at this part of it right here that was there. You're gonna rebuild to that same, it looks like-
Twenty-eight feet.
That's twenty-eight feet wide?
Yeah. The garage is, um, thirty-six feet.
Okay. Oh, you know what it is, it's the distortion of the satellite view, that's what I'm seeing, got it? Oh, now I see it, okay, we're good, now I got it. Okay, but, but, if, if you're seeing it a little bit more from the side here. Uncomplete, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? At this time. There being none, you may sit down for a brief moment. And I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wished to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. Any further questions?
What will the total height be?
So the height increase currently, it's roughly three and a half feet.
And thirty-five feet is the maximum it would be, so- well below that. If there's no any closing comments. Oh, no. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion, you may have a seat.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair. If, if they had chosen to simply rebuild in the present footprint a like structure, they would not need to come to this board, because they've suffered their damage because of the fire, they are entitled to rebuild basically the way it was without any relief. However, they have, have chosen for, you know, their stated reasons that really what the variance is for is, is for the increase in bulk, what we call bulk, because they're adding a half a story underneath the, underneath the structure. Other than that, you're not really affecting setbacks or anything like that. So, I just wanted to clear that for the board that you're really, you're really approving the variance for bulk as opposed to they're, they're maintaining for the most part the existing setbacks.
Okay. Any other discussion? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion for variance number, or application number twenty-two dash zero zero four to accept the variance as written. It certainly does very much in the public good. The spirit of getting a home back that was there before and the all the things that go along with that. And substantial justice to the owners, for sure, new home after a loss and increases the value of the community by far.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion? You're granted your motion to build your new house? Thank you. Okay. Next application is two oh one Holman Street. Request for a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five and Attachment Three, Table Two, seeing as seeking a setback of eight and a half feet where ten feet are required to accommodate deck access by existing exterior door in the R S district. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record?
I'm George Draper, resident of the house, owner of the house.
Hi.
So I have a porch in the back that has a door facing to the side where there's a ten-foot setback required. In order to build a, to get egress out of there, I'd have to build a platform in a deck that would go about a foot and a half further into the setback. Or in the setback.
So basically you're adding sixteen inches into that area?
Yes, correct.
Any questions of the applicant? What does your neighbor think?
Uh, I haven't spoken with him, the house next door is a rental.
I know I'm not voting tonight, but I'm familiar with the neighborhood because I live there. And, and what is being done enhances the area because the house was dated and it's just gonna look a lot better with the changes that he's making to it.
So is, is that a question, or?
I just thought I'd add that to, or should I have waited for the discussion among the board?
Discussion would be, that's okay. No big deal, the world did not come to an end.
Thank God.
Slow down.
The meteor missed us by a half a foot.
Sorry, we're real busy at the liquor store, so we're like, I'm like, still zooming.
Zooming. It's a booming business.
That's insane.
So how far out from the house would that be if we took away the sixteen inches? I don't see that measurement.
That would be about twenty-eight inches.
Twenty-eight inches, okay.
If you take that measurement down where the, the porch meets the house, the corner of the house, that twenty-eight inches.
So the twenty-eight inches would not provide you with the necessary for a, a safe egress and stuff, and if you had to get in there with a walker or something like that, you would have, probably have issues with getting in with a walker or anything like that, so.
Yeah, I would think that.
From a fire standpoint, it would probably also hinder the ability for access safely for a fireman or something along those lines also.
Yeah, I was, uh, I didn't look up what the minimum width would be for an entrance. Stayaway or doorway, but it, um, this would, would give forty-two inches, so.
I was gonna say about forty-two feet, forty-two inches.
So that's, that's kinda what I was shooting for here.
I would say if I was probably designing something, that would be just bare minimum.
Thirty, thirty-eight would be bare minimum.
Thirty-eight's a bare minimum, good castle, my point.
I can go thirty-eight.
It makes you look at things, I had to do a, a year in a wheelchair. And it makes you look at things slightly different than normal once you've seen the world through rolling in two wheels.
Mobility is, is huge.
So. Anyway. Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
How high is the deck off the ground in the back?
The, the porch at the, the fire, it, the property drops off towards the back, so the porch at the fire end is probably five and a half, six feet at that point. You know, the eight foot, I, I we're now talking about bringing it back to six feet, maybe doing a patio down below or something like that. So this would be the maximum that we would do.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit for a brief moment as you've noticed. And I'd like to enter, to ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board for any further questions of the applicant.
Dean, did the city pick up on this with the building permit?
Yeah, when they came in for the building permits when we measured the setback.
And is this, is this door actually an egress needed door for the home?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Is this door a nee- needed for egress to the house, I'm assuming they have a front door? Front door? You know, could they relocate the door to the, to a different plane of the home, of the, of the porch?
Certainly you would need a door out of the porch, but I, I don't know whether they're
And it may not be significant for the various asks, I
I, I don't know if you could relocate it or whether, um
Well, he's asking for the variance, so he wants the door there, so.
Guessing that's the existing location, so.
That's where the dog knows how to go.
Yeah.
So any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments, or?
Uh, well, just an answer to, to his questions, we had the house completely recited recently with the configuration of that deck, so if we tried to move the, move the door to a different side, we'd have to rip all the siding off and get new windows and doors and such, so. That's part of it.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Not asking for very much.
Exactly. And it's a rental.
In this case, sixteen inches could be the
Flower pot.
The difference that makes something work wonderfully and something that just doesn't work.
Substantial justice.
Yep. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion for request twenty-two zero zero three eight, that the variance be granted. Does substantial justice to the community, to the property, to the owner, cost and everything. It's a good move. And the setback requested will, of sixteen inches really will impact nobody. Negatively.
Okay. Oh, let's see, the twenty-eight inches, no. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion as is? Okay, motion passes, enjoy. Okay. Next application, the seventy-eight Garfield Street, request for a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash twenty-eight. Use not permitted, attach two, Table One, to permit the use of agricultural, including livestock, to allow for the keeping of two pet goats. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and
My name, sorry, is Elizabeth Gleason, uh, so my husband Matthew Gleason. We, uh, my daughter's severely allergic to cats and dogs, she can have the normal pets that every other kid can have. We adopted these goats at two weeks old, which I bottle-fed for three months after that. At that time, we were on Meredith Center Road where they were allowed to have. Unfortunately, my husband's father passed away, so at that point, we were paying two mortgages. So we decided to keep his childhood home and sell our house. So we moved to Garfield Street. Before that happened, we did go to all our neighbors, let them know that we did have two pet goats and asked them if they would be okay with that, all of them said that they were okay with it. We built a fence behind the person behind us, a white fence, so they can't even see the goats. The only small portion that, the neighbors that can see the goats are our neighbors right next to us, what they gave us permission, other than that, it's just to our house. They're not livestock to us, they are our pets, they're our family. Like I said, my daughter has very health issues where she can't have the indoor pets that every other child could have. So we got goats because they're kinda like dogs for the outside.
And they can live outside, of course, so we don't have to have them in the house where, you know, they're confined and the space, air flow is confined for her and everything. She can still go out and she's able to pet them and stuff. As long as she can, you know, leave, you know, and doesn't have that, you know, around her all the time and everything.
We do wash them twice a month, they get baths twice a month, we clean them every week, they don't smell. Actually, the person that came down to take pictures of them literally had to come down five times to our house to find, you know, see the goats because they're that quiet, you can't see them. So we're just asking if we can keep our pets, we understand that livestock isn't allowed, but like I said, my daughter unfortunately can't have the normal pets that every other kid can have and I'm not planning on getting any more, we're not, I mean, this is what it is.
We don't breed them, they're both females, so. I guess that's about it. We're just asking to be able to keep our daughter's pets.
Hi. Uh, what breed are your goats?
Uh, they're Nigerian dwarf, so they're about, one's about thirty pounds, the other one's about forty-five.
And they're dehorned, they don't have, you know, they, they don't hit nothing. Most they do is rub against the fence.
When, when you were investigating, uh, looking for a pet for your daughter because she has allergies, I'm kind of curious about the process you went through trying to find a hypoallergenic pet.
Um, so
End up with a goat.
The reason why we end up with a goat actually is because when she was three years old, we adopted a cat. It lived with us for a year and a half. It dropped her immune system so bad that she actually stopped, almost stopped breathing, her oxygen went down to eighty-seven. We ended up in the hospital for five days because she couldn't breathe on her own. So from then, I did research and I talked around, they're not necessarily hypoallergic, but they don't have the same dander as cats and dogs do. And that's actually what she's allergic to, it's not the hair. So I just did my research and asked around, but they don't, uh, goats don't carry dander, so that's why she's able to be around them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Have you had certified by the Americans for Disaffilia-
Uh, that's our next step, we wanted to start here and ask for permission, if not, we are gonna go to getting them certified.
I think probably a step would be to go to them first, then come to the city.
Well, the city, they only gave us a certain amount of time, or they they gave us a certain amount of time to come and get the permission.
Who, who gave me this one?
So, in all, in all honesty, none of my neighbors had an issue, even like, like the neighbor behind us is a gentleman that was, lived there, passed away. His kids came up and took over the house, called and asked if they could have chickens and they said no, and then pretty much was like, well, how can they, how come they can have goats? It wasn't like an issue where anybody had a problem, everybody around the neighborhood loves them.
Yeah.
So it wasn't even an issue, um, at all, because we've been there since November.
It still isn't an issue, they were just like, well, how come they can if we can't?
The issue is with the city, the city doesn't allow the pet.
Oh, yeah.
I understand that, but like, it wasn't an issue with any of our neighbors until unfortunately the gentleman behind us passed away and his kids came up and wanted chickens and they couldn't have them because they asked permission. And honestly, we didn't know, like, I, I also, honest, because we had him on Mer- Meredith Center Road and we didn't know, I didn't personally know the difference.
Do you know there are hyper-
Hypoallergenic dogs.
So, but
I have one.
That is correct, but
I have a bichon who is, doesn't have fur, it has hair.
Right, but it's not, it's not that, it's a dander, and that's what we had tested.
Yeah.
We just literally had her tested, and I should have brought the paper, I apologize, but we had her tested this summer and it's not actually the physical hair, it's the dander on the animals.
And it was hell, to put it bluntly, to get rid of our cat. And so we don't want to get attached to another, like a dog, and then my kid not be able to have it.
And because the result of that, her left airway never fully recovered. So her, anytime she gets sick, or even like our neighbors have dogs, she goes over there, her airway actually collapses. And we end up in the hospital, many, many abilts for that, so.
What, what do you, what do you do with the goats?
Nothing.
They're our pets, we go out, I mean, they walk on leashes, they're
Play with them.
We run around with them. They're literally
We let them out into our yard, we'll walk, walk them in the yard, they'll walk around and they'll eat the grass, they're, that's all they do. It is, you know, we have some rocks and stuff that they jump on and, you know, we'll go in there and we'll play with them and run around back and forth. They're cool. They're our dogs.
And how do you take care of the fecal matter?
We clean up, we
Oh, where does it go?
Uh, there's properties around that allow people to dump.
We have farms that we can, I can dump at.
So they don't stay So they don't stay in our property. Like I said, we clean them all the time. Um, we actually put rubber in their house so that the smell doesn't get in the woods, so you can't smell it.
Yeah, it gets washed out, gets cleaned up.
Like, they literally just got a bath Saturday.
Are they house trained, so they don't go in their?
No, they have their own, their house. They don't come in our house.
I'm, no, I mean, in their sleeping quarters.
In their house, no, no.
But that's why, why we put down the rubber, because obviously the urine will get into the wood, but this is actually like roof rubber.
Yeah, it's roofing material.
And they have, um, straw on top of that, that would actually like sucks it all up, if you will.
Yeah, so once a week, we'll pull the straw out, we'll rake the pen, and I put it in my dump truck. I bring it to the, uh, the farm and dispose of it right there. So nothing is left within the area. There's no smells. There's nothing.
Any other questions at this moment? You may have a seat for a second. With that, I'd like to en- uh, ask if anybody from the public would like to speak for or against these applications, please come forward to introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, my name is Michael Weeks. I live across the street from Mr. and Mrs. Gleason, and my daughter is best friends with their daughter. I'm the guy with the dogs. And I feel real bad when she can't come over and visit. And at the same time, my daughter loves to go over there and play with the goats. We've had cookouts, five feet away from the goat pen, you wouldn't even know there were goats in there. Smell, sound. I've never heard the goats. They're no disturbance to us. Very friendly, not aggressive. My dogs are probably more of an annoyance, so I'd like to, on their behalf, the neighbors, we have no problem with their goats.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Raper. My property and my wife. Our property abuts their property. They have an open fence. It's, well, it's not open. It's a chain link fence that, uh, my dogs will actually go up to the fence. And try to play with them, but they can't get through the fence. The goats are very nice. I haven't heard a peep out of them. The Gleisantses do keep that property absolutely spotless. They, Matt's a hard worker. He cleans that yard up all the time. He does dump it in his dump truck, and he does take it to a farm. I know which farm he takes it to. It's up in Northfield. They're just, they're pets. They're, they're not, you know, farm animals, you know, they're just, and he has a nice place for them that they, they live in. They have a separate bin for their food, and they do. They have all these little things that they jump up on and everything. They're actually wonderful pets. And that's what I call pets. They're not raising them. They're both female. I, uh, it's for the little girl. I've, I've known their little girl since they were born. And, and she, uh, she is, she's allergic to even my dogs, my two dogs. They, they, I feel bad when she, she tries to reach through the fence and pat them once in a while. She just can't because she is allergic to them. But the goat's been great for the, her. She goes out there, plays with the goats. I love seeing a little kid play with the goats. You know, love seeing little kids play with any animal, but, you know, she's limited. And, you know, like I said, he's got a white fence that goes all the way around everybody else's property. Mine's the only one that has a chain link fence, and they do not bother me, and they do abut my property exactly right on the fence line. I don't see a problem with them. They really haven't had an issue. And I don't even hear them. I hear all the dogs in the neighborhood. I don't hear the goats. I, I got dogs, so I mean, I can't really say anything, cause my dog, if I leave it outside too long, it'll bark to come in the house. But, you know, they really need a break on this, because it, it's not just their pets. It's for the little girl, too. You know, anybody, they can get a dog, but then they can't bring the dog inside. It would be cruel to leave the dog outside. I feel that way. You know, I couldn't leave my dogs outside in the winter. These goats survive. These goats are great. I mean, I don't know what else to say other than they really are not bothering anybody. You know, if somebody can't have chickens, I'm sorry about that. That's.
Hi, I'm Maria Raper. Alan Raper's my husband, and I live right next door to them. And I seen Beth teach the do- uh, the goats, all kinds of tricks. They, she's amazing with them. And I work at Lakes Region Community Services, and I bring my clients in my driveway. They stay in the driveway and watch the goats. And they, they love it. It's just a relaxation for them. And I gotta say, it's, it's the best watching them. I don't hear them. I don't see them, but when I want to, I'll just, you know, go over and say hello, you know? But my dogs love them. They don't fight. They, they just play with them beside behind the fence. I don't see why, why they have to get rid of them. There's no reason for it. It's great. They're great.
They're not raising them.
It's therapeutic for the kids and the adults that I take care of. So, that's what I have to say. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate that. And you gotta get better chicks.
We'd have to increase the taxes. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time. Let the record indicate no one from the public, uh, wish to speak for or against this application. I would like for the record to note that, uh, we do have two letters, or one letter, uh, from, uh, Robert Mayo. At eighty-eight Garfield Street, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but it looks like he, uh, is in support of the goats. Bottom line. Okay. So with that, I bring it back to the board for any further questions. Of the applicant?
Sure, uh, to Dean, uh, precedent in the city for this, I'm sure this is not the first time. What typically, what's the stance on the city? And what has been done?
The ordinance was created, um, it's been in existence for quite some time. We have had si- similar type requests for various kinds of, uh, animals, uh, for different rea- you know, a variety of reasons. I think the most recent one that we saw was someone that wanted a couple of sheep, uh, in a similar type area. To my knowledge, the zoning board has not, uh, granted any variances, but. I think it's, I think it would be obvious for me to say that. Uh, let me rephrase that. We get requests on a fairly regular basis about what is the policy about? Chickens is the most common question, but it's other types of animals as well. And, uh, so there are a number of people out there that would like to do or need to do something similar to this. But, uh, it's not allowed under the ordinance, and to my knowledge, I, the, uh, the zoning board has not granted any variances.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments?
I just wanna comment on the chicken thing. Like, I totally understand that. Chickens are noisy. They are super smelly, and they're for eggs. Like, these aren't something that I'm milking. They're not something used for a farm. Like, these are our babies. Like, like I said, I bottle fed these from two weeks old to, to three and a half months. They are like, my dog is to you, or your dog is to you, your cat is to you. Like, that's what these animals are to us. I, like I said a million times, like, I wish my daughter could have a dog. I wish my daughter could have a cat. It's not feasible. Like, that just, it, it cannot happen unfortunately, so I really hope that you guys, um, allow us to keep our pets.
Okay, that it. Thank you. And with that, I'll close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Well, if you're gonna have a goat, my research says the Pygmy Nigerian, which they have, is one of the best things to have for a pet. Cause they're tiny little things, so I can, I can understand why they selected them for a pet. But I am very concerned about other requests, and maybe somebody not having something tiny and sweet like, like that, like a sheep. Where, where do you draw the line, if you?
We have another request tonight for chickens.
I know.
Excuse me?
Nope, there's, we're. Go ahead. Several years ago, I, probably for a lot of the people that are here, this is probably twenty years ago, uh, there was a family up in Lakeport that had a rooster. It wasn't twenty years ago. What's that? Wasn't twenty years ago. It was quite a few years ago. It was quite a few. Yeah. We had a fight right here and, 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 while we were meeting at the rec center where the fight broke out over the chickens. Yes, I. Yeah, they ended up moving to Osipia someplace like. Yes, they did. They let their rooster run around their house and.
In the house?
In the house. And it slept in the house and. Trouble is with roosters is they're not quiet.
No, and they're in the house. But these, these are a, a good, a good option, because they, they are perfect, like I said, for a pet. But to me, it's like, we get a request for sheep, so where do we go from goats to sheep to, to other things? I mean, even though they're a wonderful pet, what comes before us, I, I don't know where, where you draw the line. You had a request for sheep?
The, the designation is, they're not really farm animals. They're pets like a dog. Okay.
Yeah.
A rabbit. You know, is a rabbit a farm animal? Can you have a rabbit? Uh, you know, it's like, I consider these goats pets, not livestock.
So that's a, that's ki- we're kinda getting to the place of making a legal definition, and it might even be a, 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 an update to the zoning laws for that. I mean, I, my, my thinking is that people are not as agricultural as they were before, you know, are they, are people looking? But, man, you opened the door a crack. Oh, my goodness. I mean, I think that we've all been in places where it's been a hard time, so is there, when, at what point is there a legal definition of a pet? I mean, certainly, you know, we understand. I, I think the goats are cleaner than most dogs that are in the city. I mean.
Well, the zoning board doesn't make the definition. Okay, so the, that definition is started through the planning board, goes to the, I mean, the planning department, goes to the planning board. The planning board then makes its recommendation to the city council, and then the city council says, yes, this is after legal descriptions and all that. They make their decision, and basically that's it. And out of all of this, these decisions have went forth before the city council, and a farm animal is a farm animal to them. They did not make any discretion between a pet farm animal, a horse, a dwarf horse, a.
Rabbit.
A rabbit. Okay, it's the same as, if you look at the code and it says how many dogs you can have before you become a kennel or a this. There are reasons for the, what they do that, and the city council has determined that farm animals are farm animals and should be in the districts that allow them, and not in residential close quarter areas. And that was the council's determination at the end. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Dean. I've sat through probably ten different, in my twenty years of sitting here, at least ten different applications of people making requests for, uh, ducks, requests for hens, uh, a couple of goats. Different, different things all along, but if you went down to the fundamental reasons and you followed the path of what the intentions of the city council was, who represent the city itself, then that was the determine, and the definitions of it, whether we agree with the definition or not. We have already seen where we have tried to define something, and a superior court has said, no, you, you, you read it for what it is. Not what you think it should be. Okay? And so we've had to redo an application based on that same direction. So if I had to look at that definition based upon this superior court's decision, they did not give us that leeway. A retaining wall is a retaining wall. A farm animal is a farm animal. And, cause that is the way it is written. Okay, we have not been given as a board that leeway to rewrite that definition.
Now, is it, so if that's true, then why are, why, why is this family before us if this is more of a city council, council question?
It's before us because it is asking for the variance, okay?
Gotcha, right, 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 right.
And you can ask for a variance from any thing written.
From any rule, any requirement.
Right.
Understood.
And what I was indicating was, over the twenty years of what has been defined, okay? As the reasoning behind it, okay? That's all I was trying to do, okay? And that when we deviated as a board, no matter, in this instance, I used as an example, a retaining wall, okay? The, the wording of a retaining wall, we read into it and made more of it than what, the court said we made more of that than what was written. And so that's why that decision was remanded back to us, because we changed what the written word said. Okay, so in this instance, the written word is, in this same instance, farm animals. Okay? Whether it is a, a breed of a type that can be a pet or not, the definition does not support it. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
So in order for that to happen, there is a process that must happen so that the whole process can change, and then they can amend the definition of what a farm animal is, which then makes it a lot easier to work with, but the parameters of that definition by the superior court is how it is written.
I, I would just like to add, I mean, they're not asking for the goats because they wanna have a farm animal. Like, asking for chickens, cause you wanna have eggs, or someone else asking for goats, cause they want goat milk. They're just asking for it to, they're not asking for it as a farm animal. I mean, so I think that's another way to look at it.
Definition does not support.
Definition says a goat is a farm animal.
Right. Right, same as a horse is a farm animal, same as everything else.
You can say a border collie is a farm animal.
You can say whichever, I'm just saying what superior.
I understand.
The superior court would grab a hold of this and there would be no way to defend it because you're in, making an interpretation of the definition, which the definition is clear on what it's stating, so. I guess unfortunately, sometimes it boils down to what we may like or dislike personally, but what is written is unfortunately the guidance.
Well, that's why they're here for a variance from that because they don't consider the goats a farm animal and they aren't. And I'm not gonna tell that little girl she can't have her goats, so I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the variance for two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero four three for the Gleesons to have a couple of small goats in their backyard that the neighbors don't know about, didn't know about. The spirit is still observed because it's only two animals in the neighborhood. It's not like we're opening up the floodgates and having pot-bellied pigs running around and everything else. It would do substantial justice because the child would like to have the pet. And I would say there's a hardship involved because she's allergic to other animals. And it's really not a detriment to the general public. And it's reasonable to me that I consider the goats not farm animals. So I will make a motion that we grant the variance. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Now, very seldom do I discuss motions.
That's okay.
I understand it's against the rules.
No, no. When you say that, in your motion, what you've said, take in mind that the person behind this, next one is using chickens for therapeutic reasons. Okay? So you must ask yourselves, once you've voted whatever your conscience is. Because if the, the therapeutic or medical reasons, then that's all I gotta say. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. You got more discussion?
Yes. I think that there's, Gleesons have an hour. And it can get us all off the hook. Because if they can have the animals certified uh, by the Civil Liberty, uh, the Disability Act. And if that happens, then we would have no choice, we'd have to take the animals. But I think if, and, and if we open up the floodgates like we're doing tonight, possibly, there are gonna be a lot more people coming in here looking for, for, much more exotic pets than goats, believe me. Just take a look at what tries to, what they try to get on planes from now every time to time. I like the Gleesons. Matt works, at, at the end of the year, he works in my yard and does a darn good job of, of cleaning me, our, our yard up and I, I have them, last year I had them and I'm gonna have them again this year. But I can't vote for this because I'm looking at it from the city's point of view. And, uh, we just can't open up this can of worms.
I hear what you're saying about the Civil Liberties Act, but that would take them a lot of time.
Not the Civil Liberties Act.
Well, I mean, I'm, no, you mean disabilities. Um, but, right now, they have, they have a time constraint. They have to get rid of those animals before they can go through that process.
Well, I suppose we could give them a month extension, a two-month extension.
Or extensions.
That would be between the city and the family. As we've wanted to ever, they certify it, whatever, which way they certify. So is there any other discussion on the motion?
Well, I, I actually, Roland was going in the direction, i- is there, um, a way, and you just answered it right now, a temporary permission, I don't know what that would be called, I would ask Dean about that, where they have a period of time, let's say a year. Or whatever it might, that might look for, for them to petition the city for maybe whatever Roland is suggesting, I know nothing about this area. I, I build houses. Uh, so petition an organization that can certify them as being pets or whatever that would, I don't know. But to go to the city and ask for a process, is there, is that, is that a mechanism in place at all? Or do we even not, it's not, it's completely outside of what our board does?
Uh, no, there's not a mechanism to do that. I, I, I'm not I'm not sure that applying to the disabilities, under the Disabilities Act, for them to be comfort pet or whatever the category would fall into, alleviates them from the zoning issue. The things, uh, like, uh, service animals and comfort pets are more aimed at where they can go, i.e. into businesses or on planes or, uh, et cetera. As opposed to where they're housed, uh, most of the time. I don't know the answer as to whether, if you got some type of certification, uh, that that would alleviate you from the zoning aspect. I, I, I just don't know the answer to that.
So they would have to go through the formal process of actually.
But I mean, you know, there, there is, under the Disabilities Act, you could have a pony as a service animal. You can have, uh, there are certain kinds of birds that are service animals. There are certain kinds of pigs that are service animals and, and or, and then, uh, the comfort animal thing brings up a whole different thing, but, um, that, that is, I, I don't believe that that necessarily alleviates you from the, the zoning ordinance.
The keeping of it at your home.
Yeah.
And so there would, there would have to be a formal process of actually petitioning the city, the city council to, not, to make a definition of what it is to be a pet and that.
Right, and that, and that would be, I think, where the chairman was going was, would be, certainly the, the definition of agriculture, which includes this list of animals that are covered, could be amended to exclude this particular type of situation. But there's a process to that and it's, it is, it is not, it's not quick.
Understood.
And, um, we certainly would be willing to work with, uh, the owners of the goats and, and in terms of an enforcement leeway, if we, if we knew that process was underway and, and continuing. But at some point in time, the process ends and if it doesn't get changed, then we're right where we are right now. But if it does get changed, then, uh, you know, need the variance, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we vote, I just want to remind people, we're voting on these two goats. We're not voting on draft horses or pot-bellied pigs or something else. This is, we're voting on these two animals tonight, not something that will come up in the future or the past.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, it does come up again.
In about five minutes.
We had the case up on Clinton Street in Lakeport, uh, a couple of years ago, where they wanted to keep animals and, uh, that was inside the city limits and the answer was no.
Don't we have to look at just each case separately and not really combine them all?
My question.
I mean, they're before us, not the people in Lakeport.
Yes, you look at each property separately, okay? In this instance, it is the reasoning behind why we're saying this person might or might not be able to keep these animals. Okay, and the reasoning behind this is therapeutic. Okay? And if my, if I read the very next application, which, what's the difference?
Isn't one of the differences that, that there was no objection from any of the neighbors? And there might be some objection for the next case.
Might be.
Could that be? Not something to consider?
And the chickens are the eggs.
That's what we're here to vote on.
One more point, if I, let me just bring it up before we vote is, we're not setting a precedence here. This is a special exception.
It's a variance.
Variance for, for this one case, we're not saying it's okay. This is just, let's vote on this. Let's not vote on the next one or last week's or last year's.
Yep.
Let's vote on this one.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, Dean.
So, and I know you know this, but one of the major aspects of a variance is the hardship in the land. And I have heard no hardship in the land presented. I, I understand there's an emotional hardship and all of that, I get it. But, you know, you guys have voted on countless land use, this is a land use, land use cases and the, the number one fact that you need to do is, is create, is, is to define a hardship in the land.
Good point.
The hardship in the land is, unfortunately, the house is in a residential zone. Even though they have these two pets and everybody in the neighborhood loves them, the hardship is the city council's definition of agricultural animals and the property they own is residential zone. That's the hardship.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand.
I can't vote.
Right. So we have two votes for, all those against this motion, three votes against, the motion does not pass. Therefore, we need to entertain a motion to deny. All right, I make a motion that we deny this application based on the fact that, A, it does not meet the criteria. It does not show a hardship for the property in itself as the property itself does not provide a hardship for keeping the animals in this agricultural district. In this district as agriculture. In other words, the land itself cannot be used as a hardship because it is not zoned for using of farm animals. You cannot speak, sir.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You guys opened up a can of worms, cause it's residential like you said.
Sir.
We have all kinds of trucks going down our road. You opened up a can of worms.
Who's gonna tell that little girl that she has?
Sir, we do not, we're not, we're, we're done with the public input, so please.
It's Dean's job.
I'd like to see that little girl's face, right?
Second the motion.
All those in favor of the motion to deny, all those who are not. Motion to deny passes three, two. Okay. Next application is one eighty-seven Court Street. Request a variance from Articles five, section two thirty-five, twenty-eight. Use not permitted, attachment to table one, table of permitted use to permit the use of agriculture, including livestock, to allow for the kee- keeping of hens. If the applicant would please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. Going once, going twice. I'd like to make a motion that we move this to the next calendar meeting. All those in favor? Aye, so we had a Roland seconded.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, uh, this is the, uh, where you need to move the rehearing, request for the rehearing up before this one.
Yep.
Becomes a procedural and logistical reason. Be more than happy to explain.
Okay, we're gonna change the order on the next two items. As far as the administrative appeal and the, uh, notice of rehearing, the request for rehearing. What we'll do is we're gonna do the request for rehearing first.
On clear water?
On clear water, okay? And then after that, we'll do the second one, which is, uh, to cover the appeal. Okay? And Dean can explain why.
Yep. If, if you vote to deny the rehearing, then we will move on to the next item, which is the, uh, appeal of the administrative decision. But if you vote to grant a rehearing, which would occur at the next meeting, we would put the administrative appeal on hold.
we would put the administrative appeal on hold pending your decision about the special exception because if in the future you were to deny the special exception, there would not be a reason to have an appeal because we would not be able to issue an short-term lodging permit without there being a special exception in place. Essentially, i- if you grant the request for rehearing, we would be similar to the situation that we were in, uh, previously on this case where it was appealed to the New Hampshire Housing Board during that process while it was before that board. Kind of everything was just kind of on hold pending, pending the, uh, the decision, so it's, it's, and I'm not swaying you one way or the other, I'm not trying to do that at all. I'm, I'm just explaining the reason why we've got to handle the request for rehearing first.
Any questions?
Who made the request for rehearing?
Uh, one of the abutters, Mr. Hildreth.
Who's the Hildreth?
And did they also do the appeal?
Yes.
Administrative appeal at the same time? So if we deny the rehearing, the appeal gets washed off?
No, you proceed with the appeal. Special exception would still be in place, so therefore they have a right to appeal the decision to issue a short-term lodging permit.
There's a little bit of confusion, but let's go ahead.
So basically what you said was if we decide to rehear it, then the appeal is, doesn't matter.
Just put it on hold for now, now.
And then if we deny the rehearing, then the appeal for the decision of the permit issue would then be heard.
Yes.
Okay, got that?
Uh, question, i- is the, is the city making a determination about the best course of action for this that is either most fair for us or for the applicant?
No.
No. All right. So, as with all rehearings, we do not, uh, take input from the outside. We do not take input from the, uh, public. It is a board discussion over the merits if we feel like we have erred, uh, based on any new evidence that were provided to us or not. Okay? Or if any new evidence was provided. No, I don't even think it's new evidence, it has to do with the facts of what we decided when we made the decision. Okay?
And refresh my memory, the decision was to grant them permission to run a short-term rental and it was a three to two vote, am I correct?
You are correct.
You are correct.
And one of the people that voted for it would have to request it to be reheared?
Nope.
That's what I'm confused with.
No, what they're doing is, we're, 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 one of the abutters which under the regulations is allowed to ask for a rehearing. Okay, and that's why, based upon every decision this board makes, people have thirty days to ask for a rehearing. And under the regs, state regs and stuff like that, in order for something to proceed to state court, they must request a rehearing. If they don't request a rehearing, then they're basically not gonna be able to take this to state court
The ship is held, right.
Say that the board erred.
Okay.
Yes.
In order to grant a rehearing, doesn't there have to be new evidence presented, something that hasn't been presented in the past?
No.
Oh?
Something that, something that we missed with the evidence that was provided us.
Well, in this case, wasn't it the, the names of the owners of the property?
Well, as soon as I open it, we can discuss that. Okay, I haven't opened it yet. We were just setting the ground rules and stuff so that when we open it, we can...
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so you could grant a rehearing on, for two reasons essentially. First one would be if, if whoever's requesting the rehearing is presenting new evidence that was not presented previously but would have been available. And the second reason is if you believe as a board you made a incorrect decision, that you made an error in your decision based on the evidence given to you in the application.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open this up. The motion for rehearing, thirty-three Clearwater Place, motion for rehearing, special exception to allow for short-term lodging at thirty-three Clearwater Place, no public input will be taken on this request. The board will rely solely on written submittal from the applicant. Okay. So, on the backside of your application, you were given their thoughts. I give you all a few moments here to review that once again. In which case it was discussed.
Yep, I recall.
And the board discussed it also that the covenants of the, uh,
Community.
Community or the city outweighs the covenants of the individual and what happens is that turns into a civil lawsuit.
Sure, sure, I recall that.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review all this? Any thoughts?
I have a question for Dean, I just want clarification. If an owner wants to do a short-term rental and they're going to be on the property a hundred and fifty days, they just go and get an application and it gets granted, correct?
If they can demonstrate that they are owner occupied, i.e. a minimum of a hundred and fifty days, then they don't need any, any, um,
Action here.
Action from the, from the zoning board, we can grant.
Okay, so now...
In this, in this case,
Yeah.
this, this is not an owner occupied situation. They requ- requested the special exception under the provision of that the practice of short-term rentals had been previously done for, for a number of years previously, even though it was a previous owner, it was the property did short-term rentals for a period of time that met the criteria of the ordinance. The, you, you do not have to satisfy both owner occupied and previous use, it's one or the other.
Or the other, and that's why they came before the zoning board for that exception because they were not
They were not owner occupied, correct.
And they, and they just used, because you said there, there's one of two things they have to point out, that the previous use piece of that property or the, um, the thing about, um, you know, it's a benefit to the community versus personal, personal gain. And they used the, the fact that, um, it, the property had been used in that fashion prior to.
Correct.
Okay, does that not lend, if, if we start? No, I'll, I'll stop there, thank you.
So my recollection is that we had the, the members of the community, their primary, uh, not argument, their comment was that this is not allowed in the real estate covenants. And I think if I recall, our, our conversation was, real estate governments are outside of our purview, they have no impact on the, the city's zoning ordinances. And so we granted the exception based on that, that information there.
Well, yes, because the original determination was remanded back to us. So, if you looked at all the provisions that were provided and the guidance that was given to us to follow, they had met all the criteria required to have their Airbnb based on that, okay? We then took the vote. After some discussion, we then took the vote and I, I don't remember if it was what the vote was, but it passed.
Yep.
Okay. Now the question is, do we feel that within that parameters of the requirements for the Airbnb and our interpretation of that requirement based on the evidence given to us, did we err in that decision? And that was, but...
That's what we're deciding first.
That's correct.
And so what happens if you, if we say that, no, we made the decision according to the rules, that cancels this, then it gives, it, it, it gives an open door, uh, Dean, if I may, that now they have the ability to make a further action, is that how that would work?
Yes.
Okay.
If we were to say we erred, then we would hear the whole
Got, we start all over again.
Start from ground one. Okay? If we say we didn't err, then that part goes and they can choose whichever direction they wish to, as an applicant, to choose what direction they go, they can let it lie or they can pursue it in superior court.
So we have two things on the table, a, a motion of, of rehearing and if we say, no, we do not want to accept the motion of rehearing, then do we go on to this next piece?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay. So, do we as a board feel like we've erred in our judgment when we provided an affirmative motion for the applicant to have an Airbnb?
No, we did not.
Roland?
I can't think of where we erred.
Mike?
According to Mr. Hildreth, we erred because the new owner of the property did not have it for five years prior to the...
Is it owner specific or is it the use of the house?
It is property specific.
Property specific, so if that is the zoning ordinance, then whoever owns it doesn't really matter.
And, and once again, that goes back to the A or B. A, not Airbnb, but A being if it's an owner occupied and for a hundred and fifty days or longer, or B, has it been used?
Sure, sure.
And in this case, they opted for the B, which in case the evidence provided to us showed that it was in use for the five years.
And that could be a definition that in superior court that could be modified or directed at some point. But according to our rules that we have before us right now, we, for me, we made the right decision.
Yep. And we were provided the definition that we would be using for the character of the neighborhood and blah, blah, blahs, so those left us with just the other criteria to work with. So, once again, Richard, we did not err, correct?
That is my...
Roland, did we err?
No.
Michael, did we err?
I voted against it, so it's hard for me to say you didn't err.
Okay.
But legality wise, you probably did not err. I voted against it because it's a nuisance property in the neighborhood.
Right.
Right.
So...
And that was the one guideline that we were provided that left a bad taste in our mouth.
Sure, exactly.
You know, so your decision was probably not an error, it's, it's more I have the bleeding heart for the neighbors.
Why don't we all have that?
Truth be said.
Being on this side of the bench is different than being over there, I will tell you that.
We did not err and I voted with Michael because I had a bleeding heart for the neighbors as well. But we did not err in our decision.
Okay. And I do not think we erred.
I don't think so.
Uh, I'll keep my personal thoughts to myself on that one, I will, uh, but as I said, I used mouthwash when I got home. So, it, it is determined that the board has said we have not erred, so therefore the motion would be to deny rehearing. Okay, so I therefore make a motion that we deny the request for rehearing based on our discussion.
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion of that motion, there being none, all those in favor of the motion.
I'll abstain.
Okay. We have four for denial and one abstained. All right, now, that leads us to the second business at hand is application for administrative appeal. Appeal of approval of permit for short-term lodging because the property does not meet the requirement of special exception nor the permit that was issued to allow for the use of, uh, use and because both the special exception and the permit were issued to the previous owner, not the current owner. previous owner, not the current owner. Is the applicant here? And would you please introduce yourself for the record and explain yourself?
Sure. My name's John Hildreth and I live at thirty-nine Clearwater Place. And my reasoning is not necessarily that the permit was issued to the previous owner. It's that in the regulation for short-term lodging in the city of Laconia, there are two distinct uses. One is the, uh, the allowed accessory of an owner occupied house to do short-term lodging. I understand, and I think that, that, the the thought behind that is for maybe a, an owner who can't afford his taxes and so leaves his house and rents, and this is basically what the previous owner did. And that's covered in section two thirty-five, forty-one, colon, M, one, C, I. Short-term lodging in an owner occupied property is considered an allowed accessory and as was stated before, this is allowed. Now, in granting special exceptions, two thirty-five dash seventy, colon, C, two, I, E, one, the applicant can demonstrate that the use in question has been common practice in the specific property. And the, the use, the common use in that property was owner occupied, short-term lodging. What the granting of the special exception is granting a different use. And one is owner occupied, and that was common practice prior. But straight absentee owner, investment property strictly for lodging, short-term, is a different use and it's covered in two different sections of the regulation. And I've spoken with an attorney and he concurred that these are two different and separate uses.
Okay.
So in other words, if in this case someone owner occupied rented to help pay their taxes or help them financially, whatever, that's an allowed accessory. But to turn this property and treat it like a commercial or residential shorefront is changing the use in that neighborhood.
Okay. You gotta give me a moment, I'm.
Oh, sure, sure.
Mauling that around and pushing some cobwebs around. Any questions of the applicant, please?
Is there a distinction in the use? And I hear what John is saying, uh, that it seems, um, is there a distinction in the use of the, from, from the owner's perspective? In the two different exceptions that are granted? So it, does he have a legitimate like to stand on to say that two different people owned it? And they kind of did the same thing, but they used the two different one? And you had said that there's an either or? Is it an either or or is it, it can be either or?
So if I may add to your question.
I'm kind of speaking it out loud to kind of clarify my own.
Yeah. The previous owner used it in a hundred and fifty day Airbnb.
Owner occupied.
Owner occupied. Can that same time period then be captured and used for a non-occupied Airbnb? And, and meet that criteria because what's being asked is, is there a difference in that criteria? Is that correct?
I, I think, I, you said exactly, you said it out loud what I was thinking, yes.
And that's what I was trying to mull around in my head was how to ask that.
Is the ordinance specific enough to say that?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
The previous owners, that was their primary residence, it's my understanding. And they conducted short-term rentals. This was before we had an ordinance, but the activity still was conducted. And we were shown evidence that that activity occurred for more than five years. The special exception goes with the property, not the owner. This current owner, assuming they still maintain their special exception, okay? This current owner could sell the property and the special exception would go with it.
Okay.
So in this case, a previous owner did short-term rentals.
The activity.
The activity. Even if, even though it was on a more limited basis, they did the activity. And, um, and that was the reason for the special exception request. It is not, again, it is not related to owner occupied. It is related to the activity in this case.
Okay.
Another way within the ordinance to get short-term rentals is to show a number of other things, one of which is owner occupied, but they are not, it, they are mutually exclusive. They are not dependent on each other.
Understood, okay.
The, the, the applicant of the appeal states in his appeal that the former owners did this practice. Yeah, I don't think there's any question in anyone's mind that this activity occurred. And the activity of short-term rentals has occurred in the city on all kinds of properties for decades. What's changed is the platforms. That's what's changed. Other than that, the activity is the same, whether they rent it for a week or they rent it for a month or they rent it for a weekend, it's the same activity that is occurring. And, and I, I, I understand that there, I, I will not deny and I will agree that the ordinance is a little convoluted as many ordinances sometimes are because they get crafted by committee. This was certainly no exception to that. But, uh, that, that has been our position since we've enacted it, that yes, there's owner occupied and that's one way of going, and then there is an historical use and that's another way of going. And there are others.
Sure. So basically from the city's perspective, the activity has been taking place and therefore, it seems to me that there's nowhere else this can go unless the applicant wants to have further appeal to, not to, not to us though.
From, from an administrative standpoint, since this board granted special exception, I can't refuse the, the application for the short-term lodging permit unless there's another reason, uh, I E. There's something in the property that, that is unsafe or, uh, you know, doesn't meet the criteria for, for, usually for a reason that's not in the, not in, in the ordinance.
Sure, sure.
So.
And that is what we're discussing tonight.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Is the permit?
Is the permit.
Understood, yep.
All right.
I'm, I'm still a little confused because the historical use of that property was owner occupied. So it wasn't just a matter of they're using it as a short-term rental, it was, the historical use was owner occupied, short-term rental.
They were doing both.
Excuse me?
They were doing both. The previous owners lived there and they rented. They were doing both.
Oh, right, right. It was an owner occupied property, which is covered.
I thought I'd come back to see which one of you guys want to come tuck my crying daughter into her bed.
Please, sir.
You can shut the fuck up. Who, this is ridiculous.
Turn that off and please call the police.
Yeah, call the fucking police. You guys are making my daughter cry to bed. You're a piece of shit. You're awesome.
It's two separate uses and the pre- the previous owner actually rented as an owner occupied rental after the, um, regulation went into force. So it continued in that use. It doesn't say. Says the applicant can demonstrate that the use in question has been common practice at the specific property or structure. And the owner occupied rental is very different and allowed accessory, whereas the absentee investment owner strictly for commercial use is different.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Now, is this a public hearing for this? Okay. So is there any other questions at this time for the applicant? If not, think about it, you're gonna get another opportunity. With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Attorney Lisa Bianco on behalf of the, um, Melvilles, Gary and Doris, Melville, DNG Clearwater LLC. Just want to say that we do agree that the activity has occurred dating back to twenty fourteen, the historical use clause does, um, take effect in this instance. Um, I, I just think it is a little bit of a mischaracterization that they are absentee owners, they are on the property a significant portion of the year. They do rent from basically June to September, um, but are on, uh, the property for the majority of the year thereafter. They're not using this for commercial use, it is being used for residential use when they do rent it, um, to people that may stay for a short period of time. So being used commercially, I think, is a mischaracterization of the property. I think that's really all we have for this.
Okay.
Can I say something? I'm sorry, I'm kind of comfortable about that man coming in here and abstaining.
As, as I am as well.
I'm concerned that he is extremely upset and, and I'm afraid that he might try to do us harm.
He's all right now.
You think he's okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just very nervous.
Well, when we close the, the thing, we can have a request, have the police outside if you wish.
That's reasonable.
Until we leave.
I, I don't think that would hurt. Thank you.
Have a question for her?
Yes.
Um, do you have any, um, documentation or anything that you can give us that's, that shows that they're living partially and renting partially?
I don't just, um, what they have shared with us is that they do typically rent from June to September. Um, they are, I, an example is during COVID, during twenty twenty, they were up here, I believe, for eight months, the entire kind of frame of that. Uh, Mr. Mel- Melville, excuse me, does own a business down in Massachusetts. Um, recently they lost their CEO, so he ha- has had to spend more time, um, in Massachusetts and I think they would rather be up here, um, but because of work-related issues, they're there more often than they would like to be. Um, they do register their cars here, if that makes any difference once, rather than I don't.
It's not a small thing, for sure.
But yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask?
Now.
You, you say they rent it.
Mm-hmm.
So they're, they're gaining income from it, so that's not commercial?
My understanding of commercial use would be that a change in the use of the property as itself, um, not as if they were running a business out of there or something of that nature. Um, a short-term rental, I don't think is defined as commercial use just because it is still maintaining a residential character because the people that are residing in the property for a short period of time, whether that's a few days or a week, are there as residents. They're not there to run a business or something of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Now, once again, we're here because they want to appeal the permit. And, and that it was an error on the city's part for issuing a permit. Okay? Any other questions of the applicant? Are any? Nope, let me stop. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Not the applicant, gentlemen. That's quite all right. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I'll close it to the public input and bring it back and the applicant can come forward. Do we have any further questions of the applicant in connection with the permitting, the permit being issued for the property? There being none, any closing comments?
Sure. The Melvilles have confided in me that this is not their only short-term lodging that they purchased for that purpose. And, um, I can certainly say that they're not here on a regular basis. They have other properties that they do the same thing with, so that is, uh, that's what I considered a commercial business. It was, it was requested by DNG LLC, not by an individual, so. And I still maintain that it's two different uses and what's happened because there was an owner occupied situation, this has now turned into a property that is completely, completely free of, of the, uh, the parameters of owner occupied. And, and it's now considered if the board continues or does not, uh, remand or, or rescind this regu- this, um, application or, or permit, that the property, that particular property is now like a commercial shorefront or, or residential shorefront or commercial property treated the same way.
Mr. Hildreth? No, they've been renting, like this has been going on for a few months. Have they been renting it this summer?
There, it's rented now. There was a caveat or whatever that they had agreed with the state that they would put a fence in. And the fence went in last week and, or this past week and it's, and the property's rented now for the first time. But they could not, to my knowledge, rent it before they put in, that was one of three stipulations that they promised the state, the first two being not. They just, basically the first two were, we're gonna follow the regulations. They would only have twelve people and they would not park in the street, which are common. Those are regulations within the short-term leasing.
That, that has not been issued yet this year?
No, no, because they haven't had a rental.
I thought we had an ordinance against rental, or fences in that neighborhood.
It's a covenant, so that again is a civil action.
Okay. Sorry, you have to come back.
Yeah, they've also put up no parking signs and established their own no parking zones.
Okay, anything else in your closing comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna close it to the public altogether and bring it to the board for discussion on. So with that, I'm gonna close it to the public altogether and bring it to the board for discussion on did the city err in providing a permit for the Airbnb use, short-term rental use? Let me clarify that, because I don't know who they ran it through, and it's not necessarily Airbnb. I think Airbnb is a cliche for a company, short-term rental, so.
That's the city's designation, regardless of how often, how many, whatever, short-term, short-term rental is, STL is the.
So does this board feel that the city erred in the processing of the permit?
He has a good argument. The people were residents and rented it occasionally versus they're not residents, they may register their car here, but.
But what does that bearing have to do with if the city per, was given the zoning board's approval to issue the permit? And the city issued the permit?
Can I, I, I would like to ask a question that kind of relates to the directive we got from the the, the, what was it, the housing board, I guess, guiding us that, I guess, kind of towards the vote we ended up taking. And one of the things that I'm reading in, in that declaration was that we were told that we had to, the zoning board had to look to future use, you couldn't look to past misconduct. And, and I guess I don't understand that, if, if there was past misconduct, why you can't look to that when you're trying to make a decision? So when we're looking at issuing a permit for them, why you can't look at the misconduct that that owner demonstrated?
Because that was provided to us by a branch, or a, I'm not sure, would you call it from the Superior Court? Okay? And that part would be, have to go back to did, for the request for the rehearing, that has not the bearing on whether the permit was issued or not. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
It's a great question, and I think that's what they make listerine for.
Okay.
Is because of, we don't always, will not always agree when something is remanded back to us. But that's why they give us the parameters on that.
I think they have missed something, though, could that housing board have missed something?
That is possible, I can't read their minds, I can only read their thing. And once again, that is the process for which the current applicants have to follow on their journey and how far they wish to take their journey, okay? With their arguments and whatnot, they do have the abilities before them because, A, the number one was, they were refused for the rehearing because it was determined that the board, by the board, didn't err. So it provides them with the avenue now to go to Superior Court if they so wish and take action via that way. Okay? Everything has their 30-day window, safety valve, okay? And every decision the board makes has that 30-day safety valve, which is there so that if there is a disagreement in that, they have another avenue to follow. It just doesn't die here. Now, and the reason why I keep going back to what is before us now is the appeal. And the appeal is that the planning department erred in issuing a permit based on their facts, okay? Which were available when the board made its decision. And originally granting, no matter what the vote was, the, it passed. So that provided the planning department the ability to issue a permit. Now, when they issued the permit, it is well understood that they have their 30-day window, as we tell someone doing anything with a variance, if you're a butter, objects to you, they got 30 days. So if you build something or do something, and it goes to Superior Court, and the court says, eh, they kind of erred, you can end up losing a building, have to move a building, have to do things. Okay? That's the checks and balances of all the process. All right? So what is before us is, did the planning department err in issuing a permit for them to provide the services of short-term rental?
Seems like Dean explained that the use was there regardless of whether it was owner occupied or special exception. But as Mr. Hildreth points out, they did not have a spec, a special exception before 2019, because it did not exist.
Be that as it may.
It was still.
That has no bearing, because the planning department doesn't make that determination. That determination on the interpretation of that information provided of us, the evidence provided for us based on how the regulation is written, the board decided through whatever that vote was to approve the short-term rental, which then the only direction the planning department can take is to issue the permit. And then at that point, all these 30-day actions take place. Okay? So as soon as the meeting's over and the notice of action, I think it's based off the notice of action happens, then that 30-day clock starts again, so people can, the previous application, or I should say, the short-term rental has chances they can take or not take within that period of 30 days, because if the new applicants decide to go to court with it, then they could have whatever legal means they can do to stop it, you see what I'm saying? At this point, and that's why I keep, and I, I'm sorry to keep reiterating, it seems like the same thing over and over again, but unfortunately, what before us is, did the planning department err in issuing the permit based on an approval by the zoning board? That they have a right to do their short-term rentals?
I would say no, they did not err.
I don't think we erred, they erred either, because they were following the directives that were provided to them.
Agreed.
Okay?
Sitting on this side of the table is different.
It's a lot harder.
For sure.
And.
Well, I mean, to reduce it down, you have a community with covenants, kind of like the unruly person moved in and nobody likes him. What can you do? That guy has a right, he paid for it, he has a right to do whatever he wants with this property, to a degree. And yet the community doesn't really want that activity there, how much does the community have that can force that guy to do something? But we were here first, and wow, it's it's our thing.
It's a tough job.
Well, we have, we have, I mean, our job is, our job is to apply the written ordinance, not to make stuff up just because we feel like it.
Right. So with all that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion on whether or not I'm not sure, is that to deny the appeal, or it would either be a denial of the appeal or a support of this, the appeal? Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion for either one.
We want a motion to deny the appeal?
It seems like that's the consensus of the board.
I make a motion that we deny the appeal, or.
Thirty-three quid, order.
Make a motion to deny the appeal based on the planning department did not err in issuance of the permit based on the fact they had an approval for the use of a short-term rental for that property.
Did you get that, Sheena?
Does that make sense? Okay, so there's the motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We got a second. Discussion of the motion.
So by voting an affirmative, we are saying that we deny the.
That's correct. So all those in favor of denying the appeal? Okay, the appeal has been denied, okay? As I've been speaking this whole time, you still have your next 30 days to determine which course from when you receive your notice of action, I think it is. And those timeframes are finite, so please follow them, okay? All right. So that's that. All right. Next on the agenda is election of a vice chair. Is that something y'all wish to do tonight, we can do tonight, or we can?
I'm gonna nominate Mike Foot.
I was gonna nominate Mike Delavecchia.
The person that's not here.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
I was gonna nominate Mike Delavecchia.
I, I was too, but.
See?
See?
Michael, that's why Michael's going first, he doesn't want to be nominated. Michael, you're retired, you've got time.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion that Mike here be the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Thank you, folks, for your vote of confidence.
Do you accept?
Yes, I will.
Good, thank you.
So I think you had a positive vote for everybody that Mike will be the vice chair.
Mike, I've been here for three months.
Mike Foot will be disappointed.
Mike, I've been here for three months, and I appreciate your, your quiet consideration, your heart, but also your attention to detail.
Oh, thank you for your vote of confidence.
He does pay attention.
Me too. Now, so that being done, do we have any other business before the board? Dean?
Nope.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Always like that. We have a second, we had a second, Roland seconded it, all those in favor, yay, we're now adjourned.
Dean, if the police aren't out there, I'll escort you to your car.
How about?
Is the recording on?
Barely made the news this morning.